I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the rule of justice for all.
Gentlemen, any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve minutes from last public business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Okay. Starting this evening, we have the board of the Western Maryland Scenic Railroad is here this evening, and we're going to hear an update from Delegate McKay and Mayor Flanagan, or anyone else that would like to speak, please feel free to come forward.
Thank you all, good evening. How are you doing this evening?
Good, Bob.
Very good.
I didn't bring any snow down. It did melt up pretty well, and thanks to Commissioner Creed for a good job on county roads around Frostburg. His guys run the ball as always, so we do appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Just wanted to kind of give a little update of kind of where the railroad is right now, where we stand. Obviously, I know without going into the COVID pandemic and talking about that for 10 minutes, we all think we're on the same page, but there's certain things just couldn't happen this past fiscal year, certainly not by anybody's choosing. Arts entertainment, the entertainment venues have taken such a hit. I heard a number that big concerts and big outdoor shows this past summer lost over $50 billion because they couldn't obviously have any entertainment. So we fortunately didn't lose that much, but we did lose a whole season. But the good news is, sure you heard the woo, we have a woo whistle, and I know what, and I'm one of the center heard an awful lot about it, because I know 911 center got a lot of calls, but what's that noise? Well, that was our big new toy 1309, which is the largest functional operating steam locomotive east of the Mississippi River, and for the first time in 64 years, it moved under its own power. We were very, very fortunate that one thing that COVID did do to help us was it put a lot of people in unemployment that worked at other railroads and other venues, and those railroads and venues had steam, or had steam they were working on and didn't know when they were going to finish it. 1309 was a really neat project, and I'd like to draw to the fact that for a lot of folks, whether if you're not into trains, maybe you're into muscle cars, you know, and a chance to touch a '67 Chevy Camaro that's just been completely rehabbed or in the process of being rehabbed, you want to be involved, and if you're a car guy. There's lots of trained people out there, so many in fact that we had literally thousands of likes when we started putting on Facebook what we were into and what we were doing. We certainly hope these people are going to come and ride behind it and take pictures of it and spend money here, and that's what we're anticipating. So the locomotive's still got some things that we need to do to it yet, but we're moving forward to get those things taken care of and to get ready to hopefully be operating this summer. So at this point, I'd like to turn microphone over to Delegate McKay, who officially, beginning December 1st, asked and agreed to join the railroad board, and so we've been working very closely together, so he'll take chapter two. Thank you for your time this evening.
Great, thanks, Mike.
The good thing, gentlemen, this book does not have 87 chapters in it. Only a second chapter. Gentlemen, it is true, I agree to be part of the Western Maryland Scenic Railroad Board for a couple of reasons. It is an essential part of the tourism here in Allegheny County. While it may not be the exact diesel or steam engine train of our economic development, it is definitely one of the lead cars when it comes to tourism. As I sat in those seats many years ago as a county commissioner, I too know the importance that the railroad brings to the county, and for many, many years, the Western Maryland Scenic Railroad has had opportunities where it needs to better inform the public, better to be better good stewards with the public trust of taxpayers' money. So we are in the process of reconstituting the Western Maryland Scenic Railroad with a couple of different things, and here I'm here to share with you that we are creating a executive financial board. This board will provide the guidance and oversee major financial decisions and will be accountable for all governing bodies and the taxpayer. It will be comprised of a Allegheny County Commissioner, a mayor from either Cumberland or Frostburg, and a member of the Western Maryland delegation. I am proud to say that, thank you Commissioner Brody, thank you Mayor Bob Flanagan, and myself has agreed to be those positions on this executive financial board. We will adopt new bylaws in the coming future. We will also revisit policies and procedures to make sure that the emphasis is on transparency, accountability, and fiscal responsibility. We're also here to address some of the financial issues that the Western Maryland Scenic Railroad has incurred during this past year, but more especially to thank Governor Hogan for awarding the scenic railroad $500,000. It was Secretary Holt in the Department of Housing and Community Development that that amount of money was awarded. One of the things that we did once we accepted that money was to talk to First Peoples Credit Union, and we have initiated a forbearance agreement with First Peoples to take care of that particular loan. We will be making a payment to them in the next couple of days as we have executed that. We have also initially, we have taken care of some arrears that was owed to Canal Place, and that has also been satisfied here locally. One of the things that we are going to do with this new executive financial is that we will be supplying the county with a monthly financials to let you all know exactly what the board is doing month to month. While it is great that Mayor Flanagan shared that we heard the whistle of the 1309 after all of those years, but to run a train, you have to run a train on a track. And in this reconstituting document that we're putting together, we have applied and sent to your CIP today to be asked to be included in future county capital improvements, and with that, we are hoping that the railroad will add a $3 charge to each ridership which will take care of the track maintenance. While this is something that is new to you all, we are hoping that your administration, as we cross the Ts and dot the Is, will help us with that guidance and coming to you later on how we are going to fix the track. So I'm very, very pleased that we are on the right, starting out the new year correctly. We do believe, I'm not sure if you've mentioned there, Bob, we're hoping that we will have a summertime start for the railroad. It is our intentions to bring the Polar Express back again, but we need to finish the things that need to be done on the 1309. We need to address our track issues, and we hope to have that all done by the summertime, as I've expressed to you. While this is kind of new to you, all three of you commissioners, is there any questions that I might be able to answer you right now, sir?
Is any of the CARES money available for the track repair?
So the $500,000 that came from the DHC, that actually was CARES Act money. So statewide, CARES Act money has been applied to the train.
Is the state going to be providing any money for the track?
For the track, I don't know the answer to that. They just gave us a check for $500,000, and we were not, we did put in a request for track in the Capitol, Governor Hogan's Capitol, and we did not receive it being in the budget but was just released.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
Well, what, over time, you know, we had hotel motel money annually that obviously, you know, goes in for routine maintenance. In the spring of 2019, we also provided additional money for emergency maintenance, and from what I can see, the railroad ties are still over in the yard. Now, was any of that applied at that time? Because it sounds like what's happening is everybody's getting paid, but the county is going to be being asked for this huge amount of money, and you know, I think we would like to demand a financial audit whatsoever. I think we spoke about it at the meeting a couple of weeks ago. How many vendors are owed? What is owed that's out there? I mean, I think we need to know, and we deserve to know.
Well, that's 100%. That's why we are dedicated to a full transparency in our forbearance with our creditors. That is going to be part of the audit that we are doing with them, that we agreed upon, and we will be glad to send that to the county as well, as I had expressed earlier, including the county on a monthly basis of where the Western Maryland Scenic Railroad is. As for the ties, were they, have we exhausted all the ties?
As you all know, basically, the city of Frostburg, city of Cumberland, you all kicked down a situation that we had been written up by the FRA for some slots along the right of way. We dealt with those, and then we've also dealt with some items over in our yards because we were starting to get track spread. And again, you can't run a train on track that is spreading because it's going to put it on the ground. So most of the ties were installed. There's some switch kits that are over there in the yards, the bigger, longer ties that go into switches, and again, we wanted to sell those last year. When the pandemic hit and we had to furlough people, our track crew went away, so we had no one to install them. So there is, as you asked, Dave, there is some material on the property that if we get a contractor in, it could be used, and you know, it would certainly help that Howard has some in stock to do that with. But the number of ties that the FRA has requested that we deal with, and keep in mind, folks, that there's still ties out there on the main line that are 30, 40, some as much as 50 years old, because over time, we haven't operated a freight operation to operate passenger. So even though it's seen a lot of service, it hasn't seen the high impact service that like CSX puts their railroad through. But wood doesn't last forever. So that's really where we are, and we haven't had a big tie replacement program, I know, for a number of years since I've been on the board. There was one done back in the 2000s, but it's come due again, it's come time again. So that's a lot of what that CIP is, as well as the bridge inspections and other things that, again, we're a railroad that falls under FRA guidelines and requirements. It doesn't matter who the operator is, what does matter is what the FRA book says. And we want to be safe and make sure we take care of every passenger and take care of our crew, so again, I know Dan received all that from John earlier today. Do you all have any other questions?
So one question on what we got today. I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, but I did see the total of $2.7 million ask. Is the train able to function on the track that's there now? Is the 1309 specifically able to function on the track that's there?
Right now, the FRA, Jason, their report is pretty, is pretty deep, and I know like the FRA is actually over at the shops right now, going with the steam locomotive, making sure that we've done what we're supposed to do, and but we have to kind of follow that report at this point. We have a new FRA inspector, and he's, we call Bolt Kicker. He walked up and down the main line, literally, and wrote up what needed to be done.
So that's regardless of 1309 or a diesel, or me and the county attorney leaning on the, switching it up?
So what I'm hearing is you cannot run?
At this point, we cannot run on the tracks. The FRA has proven that.
Can I ask when that timing might have been? I mean, we've not been running a train now for a year.
Correct.
We would have had time to do some repairs.
Well, we've known actually for many years, there have been disrepairs, and the FRA has been working with us to give us extensions, and during the pandemic, we were not awarded a, what is the right word, granted a year extension where we would not have to go through any of the inspections or anything like that, a waiver. We were not granted a waiver for that.
Right.
The crossings, even though there's no train running, they still need to be monthly inspected. There's always the anticipation at some point, someone's going to go across the track, and just the crossing itself saying that, well, you know, Commissioner Brody had his guys look at the crossing, it looked okay. It has to be inspected by an FRA certified inspector, and so that's a cost that we've been bearing all along that basically, you know, that come out of the hotel motel line. And again, the 140, we appreciate it, but it's kind of kind of put black and white here where we are, and where we are is the cost of all these inspections and so on and so forth. They're not going down. And the ties have gone up in price because good woods are defined and will be dealt with. So, but again, it comes down to the idea that, as much of the case I heard, that tourism being what it is, the fact that we want to get Allegheny County back up for business, and this is a big part of it.
So do you have any estimate as to when the 1309 will be complete, and how much total you'll have in the 1309 by the time it's done?
Well, fortunately, as I said in my earlier piece, the work that got done over the last couple of months was volunteer, and the volunteers, we had money to give them any parts and pieces because we went in for a real big donation program, and we received hundreds of thousands of dollars in donations to get the locomotive finished. And again, it was great because we had volunteers from Georgia, North Carolina, Wisconsin, Mexico, all over the country.
So to answer your question directly, Jason, we are very close. We do believe in the next couple of months, the 1309 will be able to run. We will have to have test runs. To have test runs, you've got to have track, so there is a tie-in with that. But to be perfectly honest, the reason we are saying summer has to do with ridership. We need to get revenue, and depending on where the pandemic is with numbers, we do believe that the ridership will be acceptable for us to be running in the black. Having 25% ridership makes it very, very hard to run the railroad financially. So that's why we do believe that a June timeframe to be able to have 1309 running, it will be limited, but in all honesty, we need to get ready for the Polar Express in the fall, and that's where we're going to be able to generate the revenue that the 1309 will be able to see that come to fruition.
Gentlemen, the audit, who is that, has that started, and who will that be provided by?
Yeah, so Turnbull, Hoover, and Cale will be doing the audit. That is in our forbearance agreement with our largest creditor, First Peoples, and they have also asked that they are the ones that will be preparing the monthly statement that will go to First Peoples, and that we will then be sending that to you all as the chief executive officers of Allegheny County.
Have they begun on any of that yet? I know we spent-
No, they haven't. That forbearance was just signed within the last day or so. We cannot execute that until we actually give them a check. The money from the state was deposited EFT either yesterday or today, and within the next day or so, we'll be able to execute that, and then we will be meeting with Rick Hoover to set up a meeting with him, and that's why it is so imperative about the executive financial committee will be meeting with him to set up those guardrails, making sure that everybody is included in the full transparency of the railroad going forward, sir.
Thank you.
Great, gentlemen, anything else?
Nothing.
Great, thank you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to our public hearings this evening, item two is Code Bill 1-21, it's possible action on Lavelle Sanitary District refunding bond. Commissioner Brody will be abstaining from this one. Administrator Bennett.
So commissioners, two weeks ago, we introduced this bill, $2.9 million refunding bond authorization from Lavelle Sanitary so they can refinance their debt. And as you know, we introduced it two weeks ago. Today would be the public hearing and any comment. Obviously, the public isn't here, but we did not get any comment emailed into us, so there's been no comment on that, so Attorney Beaman, correct me if I'm wrong, but commissioners can take action tonight on this if they so choose.
Correct. Today's a legislative day, so they can take action.
Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Aye.
All right, great. Okay. Moving on to our action agenda this evening, this is LoSAP length of service, it's an amendment for calendar year 20. Attorney Beaman.
Good evening, commissioners. Tonight before you on the action agenda, we have one item. That's a modification to the adoption agreement for the Volunteer Fire Service Length of Service Awards Program. Essentially, commissioners, we, you commissioners received a request from the Allegheny and Garrett Fire Association, asking the commissioners to look into amending the LoSAP agreement to take into consideration the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic, specifically looking at the fact that a number of eligible LoSAP members receive their credits, so to speak, through participating in the fire hall chicken dinners and those sort of events. Because of the COVID-19 pandemic, they haven't been able to have those events. Most of the volunteer members that earned their credits through responding to calls have earned their credits, but those members who earn those credits based upon participation in events have been unable to do so. So what you have before you this evening, commissioners, is an amendment to the LoSAP agreement. I have a letter here that I'll just read into the record. It's to Jonathan Dayton, President of the Allegheny County, Allegheny Garrett County Volunteer Fire Rescue Association. Dear President Dayton, due to the unprecedented circumstances related to COVID-19 and the difficulty that members of the volunteer fire and emergency services companies may have obtaining the required number of hours to qualify for LoSAP, the Board of County Commissioners of Allegheny County have authorized a change in the plan for January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020. Board of County Commissioners authorize that any living member that was eligible for a LoSAP service year of credit during year 2019 will be considered eligible for year 2020. Members joining in the year 2020 must meet regular eligibility requirements to be eligible for year 2020. Board of County Commissioners appreciate the efforts of our frontline volunteers and will continue to support the volunteer fire and emergency service companies whenever possible. Respectfully, Jacob C. Shade, President of Allegheny County Commissioners. Commissioners, this is for you for action this evening.
Great, Lee, I think that makes a lot of sense. We're happy to help any way we can, and commissioners, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda this evening. You got it, Jason?
I got it. So eight items on your consent agenda tonight. Item number four is the Allegheny Junction Limited Partnership Pilot Agreement Amendment. Item five is the Fiscal Year 21 Rural Legacy Program Agreement. Item six is the Third Amendment to the Agreement for Inmate Health Care Services at the Detention Center. Item seven is the Maryland Emergency Medical Services Pediatric Educational Equipment Award in the amount of $1,800. Item eight is the approval of the purchase of an emergency ambulance for Emergency Medical Services Division in the amount of $279,943. Item nine is the purchase of a special operations pickup truck in the amount of $54,715. Item 10 is the Region One Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council Appointment, appointing Elizabeth Wooster and Dr. Janelle Martin. And item 11 is community promotions in the amount of $3,390 to light the steeples project.
Great, thank you. Just a few notes. Item number four, the payment of lieu of taxes, it's in the amount of $12,500. That's for the East Side School Site.
Oh, good.
Gentlemen, this is an amendment. We already passed this. The city made a few changes, so that's just putting them all in together, so that project will be moving forward on the East Side School Site. And number 11, relating the steeples, that's our share to do the courthouse, so that's our contribution to that. We're going to keep doing that and get it all lit up, so is there any further discussion?
No, sir, but please pass on our congratulations to the city of Cumberland in getting a nice, viable project there where that school's been abandoned since I was almost a kid.
Yep, and back when the tax rolls, I think $20,000 for the city and $12,500 for us, so.
Good deal.
Very good. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, Administrator Bennett.
Just one quick thing, commissioners, at our last meeting, you guys approved as an addition to the agenda, the hotel grant agreement signature. With your permission, we have that pretty well ready to hit the street, and in the next week's time, we'll go ahead and get that program launched to get some help to our hotels, so with your permission, we'll get that out on the street.
Absolutely, and we also have another business support one coming as well.
So we're working on that as well, and that'll be following that one, so yes.
Please stay tuned, okay. Attorney Beaman.
I have nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Caprilli.
I guess a congratulations to our resident in the Lona County area that treats them well and have, you know, a very good future.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, it's amazing news.
He'll be right up there with a common attorney now.
Yeah.
Congratulations to that. Sir, I actually don't have anything to say.
Great, thanks, Commissioner. Our next public business meeting is Thursday, February 11th. I did speak to our health officer today, and this is an update, basically. Our positivity rate is right below the state average. Right now, we're at 7.64, the state's at 7.66. Our case rate per 100,000 is 36, and the state's at 39, so we're right below the state average. By tomorrow, end of the day, Friday, health department will have vaccinated 3,304 people. That includes healthcare workers, first responders, law enforcement, correctionals, judiciary, and adults 75 and older. And next week, we already have 720 people, 75 and older, plus another 660 school staff scheduled to be vaccinated. The school staff is limited to Allegheny County Public Schools, Bishop Walsh Lighthouse, and Calvary Christian. So we're going to continue to work through Phase 1B, scheduling appointments as the new vaccines come in, and then the state prioritization will be 75-plus, school workers, childcare, continuity of government, and then it goes to 65-plus and essential workers. So that's the plan. We had such overwhelming demand for the vaccine last week for 75 and older, we went through 1,000 appointments in about 24 hours that got booked up, so there's a huge demand, and I think that's the best way to do it, is try to do it by age group and get as many vaccines out as we can. But that would be about 5% of the county has been vaccinated so far, not including nursing homes, so we're on the way.
Well, sir, I know you've been involved with this since the go and worked effortlessly and tirelessly, not effortlessly, but tirelessly. What I meant to say there is it's been, the transition out there at the Shell Building, my dad went out, it was fantastic. He's very, very elderly, and what the effortlessly part was for him. He said it was seamless, it was very good. I've talked to at least 20 people in the communities, come up and wanted me to thank you for your efforts in this, because we're really doing the best we can. Now, I do see we get dinged a little bit because we're not doing everyone, but like you just said, I'm glad you cleared it up. I don't think we're getting the doses that everyone thinks that we are getting, and I think- everyone thinks that we're getting. And I think that's countrywide. I don't think that's just around Allegheny County.
The state's getting about 70,000 doses a week, and we get about 700 of those. And we're getting them out as fast as they come. So, okay, gentlemen, with that, our next public business meeting will be Thursday, February 11th at 5:00 PM. Thank you.